This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Times and Trentonian newspapers. Posted on the first floor bulletin board in City Hall filed in the city clerk's office and posted on the city of Trenton website. Formal action will be taken. Mr. Garcia.
Yes, Madam President. Role call. Councilwoman Edwards.
Present.
Vice President Figaro Keddenberg. Councilwoman First Lady.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Presente.
Councilwoman Harrison. Nice. Councilwoman Williams.
Present and presente.
And Council President Feliciano.
I'm here.
Well, all right then. And myself, Brandon Garcia, municipal clerk, presente. Uh, in Legislative Council, Mr. Edward Cologie is present. And for West Bridges is Scott Mikkio, Assistant Attorney Law Director, so the law director.
Present.
Thank you. I'll write that down here. And Madam President. If it's your will, I will move to the invocation.
Thank you.
Almighty God, who holds the fate of man and nation, we most humbly beseech thee to bless this our city, these deliberations, and these thy servants, that they may act with wisdom and understanding for the good of our community and thy greater glory. Amen.
Amen.
All right. And Madam President, at this time, I do not believe we have any presentations. If it's your will, we can go right to public comment.
Yes, we can. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. And so that the public knows, public comment will be five minutes for each individual. Please state your name and address for the record. We have one individual for public comment here, Madam President. It is Leontio Vasquez.
Thank you.
And please note, you are able to address anything that you wish, sir. The council is not obligated to respond. Certainly.
Dusting. Good evening, Madam President, Madam Vice President, members of council, and staff. Um, tonight, I just need to bring to your attention, actually, an SOS message. We have a Trenton 250 plan that needs to be looked at again. Um, we're having issues in the zoning department, the planning department, I'm sure you're aware of. Uh, the zoning official had retired, planning official had left his position. Uh, there's insufficient staffing in the building construction department, creating an backflow in that department. We have investors that have spent money coming into this town and can't get permits. I have behind me Mr. Jose Torres and his wife Noelia. I had 1552 South Clinton Avenue approved for an expansion. It's a single building deli. I had it approved through zoning, uh, for an expansion to increase the foot, the square footage of the deli, making it a small supermarket, raising it up one level for two apartments. A return for site plan has been a nightmare because, uh, the, um, the city of Trenton does not have anyone to actually process these applications. I also have eight projects. These are development projects, uh, that are pending, and nobody knows who to give it to or who to receive. I had, I brought them in three weeks now, um, and it's frustrating. Uh, I also, in the process of trying to get the YWCA closing, however, I think these guys are going to back out. This is the YWCA on Academy and, um, well, Academy and Hanover. Um, and because they're aware that there's no planner, they're not going to spend the time to go through the circles trying to get things approved. Um, the one thing I did want to point out in my observation, I've been doing this for 20 years. I sat on the planning board, I sat on the zoning board. When I see, what I see here, because I'm here every day. I'm not sure whether, you, you may not see me, but I'm here every day. You have some in, how can I say, there's not really an operational process in place. There's no direction, there's no leadership. I submit plans for, for a project, and it takes six months. I've got an ice cream store, 620 Whittaker Street, that I had to approve for an ice cream store in the front, dress shop in the rear. It's been over a year, and we're still waiting for the electrical inspector to look at these plans. And that's because, um, they're overworked, and they're doing a good job. Don't get me wrong, they're doing a good job. It's just we don't have enough staff there. Um, when I work with other municipalities, there's a, there's a construction official in charge of the whole department. And what you have is subcode officials. Their responsibilities are to review plans and approve them or deny them. It goes back to the architect. The architect will revise the plans, come back and get them approved. Then you have your construction officials. Those are the electricians, the plumbers, the builders that'll go out and inspect. Here, we're relying on one individual to review the plans and do inspections. That's counterproductive. With a workload that we have, it's, it's, it's almost like, how can I say? The city of Trenton has more volume than any other surrounding community, but yet we don't have a sufficient staff to get things done. As I indicated, this family here, they've been in the business for years, and yet they have been anxiously waiting, and it just keeps going back and forth. We have to keep adjourning the meetings or adjourning and requesting. The 17th of this month, I'm here for two other cases, and quite frankly, I, I do over 50% of zoning in the city of Trenton. Because I sell Trenton. I love Trenton. This is my town. I like to see people come into town from out of town, and I like to help people that live here that want to do things and, and create and take these distressed properties and renovate them, like on Stuyvesant Avenue. I have a, a friend of mine that's done plenty of work on Stuyvesant Avenue. I'm not going to mention names. Um, but we've been successful in getting these, uh, uh, properties reintroduced into the community. I asked, I, I did want to see the new director, but I'll deal with her tomorrow. I wanted staff to also be aware of this, because I think the legislative body and the administration should work together, understand these deficiencies, and put something in place. I, I, yeah, I, I was assistant director of a hospital, and that was one of the things I was responsible for, was to. Thanks.
Madam President, on your call, uh, that is all we have for public, uh, listed for public comment this evening. If it's your wish, you can start with anybody for civic comment.
Thank you. Does any council member have any civic comment that they would like to make tonight? Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes, thank you. So I was, um, debating, thank you everyone for being here, gracias a todos por estar aquí con nosotros esta noche. Um, I was, um, debating on whether I was going to say something or not, but I, based on the number of phone calls that I received in the last two days from some of the comments that were made at the last council meeting, I just want to just assure everyone who elected me to be in this position, I am here to do the work of the city. I am not, I, I was unaware of some of the articles that were printed or social media posts that were made, um, within the last week or two, and I am not here to have a rebuttal for all of those things, nor am I, um, entertaining some of it, um, that will cause divisiveness between our colleagues and I. Um, however, I know some people were upset because they felt like I was ignored on the dais, and I just want to reassure everyone that, um, I am here to support my colleagues whenever possible, and I'm sure they will do the same. And I want to shout out the Rosado family for continuing to do the Coffee with a Cop. They've been doing it now for 10 years, and it has been successful every single year. And I just want to say that the article that was printed should have been more, um, based off of that, and I want to say congratulations to them on a successful event. And shout out to every organization that I do partner with and work with in the city of Trenton. I continue to do the work. I will always do the work as long as God will continue to cover and protect and guide my path. Um, with that said, also to Mr. Leo, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Um, we are lacking resources. We are trying to see, we, we're, we're deficient in that area, and we're trying to figure out how to address it. It's not going unnoticed. Trust me, we are all complaining about the same thing. We're trying to fix it. And I know it's not going to get fixed overnight, so please give us some time as we are trying to work towards that, um, because it's a big issue in our city, especially when we don't have people that are able to go out and inspect and do certain things and allow permits for developers to come in. We're going to lose business, and we don't want to lose business in the city. So please know that it's not being ignored. Um, and also, just a couple of announcements. I want to say that the Trenton Area Soup Kitchen will host their street light art sale on Thursday, April 11th. Um, and that's from 10 to 2:30 PM at the College of New Jersey. And most of the proceeds will go to that individual from the Trenton Area Soup Kitchen who has artwork that is being displayed, so if you can go out and support. Also, the Trenton South Ward Neighborhood Association will be having our next Community Conversation Meeting on April 24th, and that would be at 6:00 PM. Thank you all for being present.
Councilman Harrison. Oh, wait, did anybody else, I, I was asking if anybody, okay. All right, Councilwoman Williams. No, you can go now. Go ahead, Councilwoman, thank you.
Thank you very much for, uh, everyone being here tonight. I do have a, a couple announcements and also, uh, a couple statements. So I just want to announce, first of all, uh, on Saturday night, uh, is going to be the Gala for Passage Theater. Um, it would be great if many of Centratonians can attend. I believe there's still tickets for it. Please get more information at Passage Theater, uh, T-H-E-A-T-R-E dot org. Uh, it is this Saturday night, and it's the biggest fundraiser of the year that they have, uh, for the organization. Also, uh, tomorrow morning, uh, from the hours of 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, uh, we, uh, there will be another, actually, a coffee with, uh, Trenton Department of Fire and Emergency Services. It'll be hosted by Council President Crystal Feliciano, Councilwoman Josie Edwards, and myself in honor of the Trenton Department of Fire and Emergency Services. It's a great way to meet some of the folks who, uh, protect us and keep us safe. So please come on down to Slamming Brew. Uh, it's at 24 South Warren Street tomorrow morning. I can assure you, you'll have a great cup of coffee, you'll even have a greater conversation, and it is a lot of fun. So please, uh, join us and bring others, uh, if you can make it. Um, so one other thing I wanted to discuss tonight is, uh, it's been emerging as an issue this past week, but I've had a number of constituents reach out regarding the safety of the parking garage at front and, uh, South Washington, which has been abandoned for a very, very long time. Um, I remember, uh, I believe it was in 2006, it was finally closed even to the incubator offices that were there. It's something that has gone on too long, in my opinion. Uh, I think, uh, at this point, the way it looks structurally and also what it's doing as far as not being in use to parking in downtown Trenton, the looks of it, but really, the safety of it is the most important issue. We need to, uh, get a decision on this property. We need to have this property torn down. It does not seem that it can be saved, it can be remediated, uh, in a way that would be safe for cars, et cetera. Concrete is buckling. Uh, when the Trenton Film Festival had an office there and other, uh, nonprofit groups and incubator groups had, uh, organizations had offices there, there were severe mold issues in that building. So I, collectively, uh, the arms of government, I'd really like to see in the coming couple of months, let's get a decision on this. Let's get a way to move forward, because it's also holding up a lot of real estate in downtown Trenton that we need to potentially provide more housing, provide more jobs in our city and in our downtown area, which would benefit everybody. Um, the other thing I want to, uh, also want to thank, um, Mr. Leontio Vasquez for coming tonight to bring to light again the issue of us not having enough inspectors. I've known Mr. Vasquez, I'm going to say probably 10 or 12, probably more years, as he's brought many cases, uh, to help businesses, uh, navigate the zoning process. And it's true, uh, this has been a systemic issue for many years, but most recently, uh, I would say in the last five to seven years, best I can tell, it's a severe financial issue, and we can't take care of this ourselves. We really need the help of the state. I'll echo my comments from a few nights ago. Um, and I also thank my colleague, uh, Councilwoman Gonzalez for speaking about this tonight, because as everyone up here has said, in the past year or so we've been on council, we have to have more inspectors. This isn't just about getting businesses up and running. It's about the safety, the health, the cleanliness of our city, but we can't advance our city, we can't help our city if we are hamstrung and handcuffed by not having enough inspectors. It's one of the number one quality of life issues we have in our city. It is the biggest impediment to businesses coming in, to building new properties, renovating properties, getting properties that aren't on the tax rolls to the tax rolls. And also, I'm going to put this out there, I think it's a big problem for us to not have to be able to not have to always take down a project, take down a process, a building or a business, because it's in bad condition. If we had inspectors, maybe we had a business, an organization would want to take over a slightly dilapidated building before it became a terribly dilapidated building in need of an emergency demolition, which is something we do need to get permission from the state to handle. So please, um, I would really like to see our state partners, the DCA, help us. I'm not beating up on anybody, but there's no other way out of this. We really need the help of the state, because I can assure you, from garbage inspections to dump, legal dumping issues, to housing inspections, plumbing inspections, gas inspections across the board, we have had a request or we've had an issue since we've been on council since last January, and that's only a short amount of time. It's only about 15 months. So please, help us, help ourselves.
Thank you, Madam President. So good evening, everyone. Um, I did want to address Mr. Vasquez. I know everybody's probably going to do that, but I just want to let you know, that has been a concern of ours and something that we're all passionate about. Um, DCM, DCA is here, so they're actually listening as well. One of the things we did talk about was shared services, so we are looking into that. We are trying to move, we do understand that time, it absolutely is money, and we do not want anyone to lose out on their investment. So just want to let you know, we are paying attention to that, and we're hopeful that we'll be able to get more inspectors, um, here in our city. Uh, I did want to address an issue that came to my attention. Um, I received a phone call from a loved one who was trying to bury their loved one. And they have a family member who, when the family member passed, they had a loved one who was on the lease, and the loved one was locked out of the apartment. That should never have happened. The family has been struggling to try and get, and they just had to bury their loved one in the rain yesterday, and they had to go out and get new items because of it. We need to get a handle on how this is being taken care. It's disrespectful. It is disrespectful, and there's no need for, uh, things like that to be done. They should have worked with the family. Um, so these folks will be getting a phone call. This is, um, at Kingsbury. I'm just going to call them out. Um, but it never should have happened. Um, so that is something I did want to address, um, just disrespectful. I, there's no other word for me to put on that, other than that. Um, I did want to say that, um, April 8th is my next West Ward conversations that we'll be having at the fighter, um, the police station on Hermitage. I invite, um, anyone from the West Ward to please come out. It's at 5:30. Um, that's next Monday, a week from, actually, not a week from, it's in just a handful of days. And then on April 27th, I will be having, hosting a pre-Mother's Day celebration at Greater Mount Zion, 42 Pennington Avenue. If you know of any mothers-to-be, I invite you to have them come out. We are going to celebrate them. They will enjoy themselves. They will go home with their arms and cars packed by the time we are done with them. But we want, we do a lot for our moms. We don't do a whole lot at times for the moms-to-be. So I invite everyone out, April 27th. Um, again, it's at 42 Pennington Avenue, Greater Mount Zion. The time is from 11:00 to 2:00, um, 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And then, um, just a little, uh, commercial identification. On Monday, it's the solar eclipse. It's going to be coming through our, uh, community, um, somewhere in the midday. Do not look directly into the sun. Do not look directly into that solar eclipse. You will be damaging your cornea and your retina. People say, I can do it. You can do it, but you will regret it. So there are solar eclipse glasses that you can get practically from anywhere. So please, order it, go out, get it, go to, uh, the, uh, movie theater, tell them that you want to go see a 3D movie. Come home with solar eclipse glasses, but do not look directly into the sun. You will regret it, if not in that very moment, very soon thereafter. Um, and I believe that is about all that I have. Um, with that, I'm going to go with one. I want to thank everyone for coming out. I thank our legal department. I thank our clerk and his staff. I thank all of you to come out. DCA, we always appreciate having you here. Your presence is always appreciated. And everyone that is out here that just takes a part and is concerned about the community. I thank my aide for being here. Um, Ms. Anne, I appreciate you, and I am grateful for the work that, uh, we as a council body that we do, I am grateful. Um, I want to reach our city's mission statement, which is recognizing that the people of Trenton have made us guardians of the public trust. We are committed to govern with integrity and fiscal responsibility, to seek excellence in the city's operations, and to serve all of the city's people with respect and compassion. I wish everyone a safe and a pleasant evening. Thank you.
Councilwoman Edwards.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. Um, I want to start off by saying, I, I want to echo the sentiments of Councilwoman Gonzalez. I feel like, um, a, a lot of people in the public are intentionally divisive, and I think it's important for all of us to realize that, and I want to commend my colleagues for rising above it and, you know, speaking up about it, even though we don't need to all the time to address these, these types of attacks on us and things. But I do believe that the news media has a responsibility to be, you know, responsible in their reporting. You know, if you're going to talk about an event, talk about the event. Don't skew negativity and then cause divisiveness amongst us. And, and I'm glad that we haven't allowed that to come between us. So I just want to commend us all for that and say that, you know, we all support each other when and where we can and how we can. And we do all work full-time jobs, as our council president said last week. So, you know, we show up where we can, and it's no malicious intent, you know, when we can't make it somewhere. So if you don't see us and you only see one of us, that's who can make it there. So respectfully, um, I will digress. And I hope that everyone realizes the hard work that we've done and, um, continue to support us. So moving along to the lack of inspectors, this definitely is a hindrance on the city. As we push for redevelopment, zoning and planning and permits and things is a part of the process. And for a business to be held up for six months could inadvertently cause them to lose their investments and lose their business, and then therefore, we're losing out on tax revenue. We're losing out on residents being able to be employed at a livable wage and so on and so forth. And we definitely have been asking about this, and I know that there is a new budget, um, that is being proposed or has been proposed, the DCA. So I'm interested in knowing whether new inspectors are included in that, and we will do our due diligence to follow up to see if that is the case, and I hope it is. Um, and lastly, the issue about recycling, um, is an environmental issue. So there was recent changes with Mercer County Recycling, um, where they no longer are accepting recycling in, in cans that are blue, only yellow or green. So therefore, this past recycling day, a lot of people's recycling were not picked up. Um, there were no notices sent out that said that they won't be taking cardboard that is sitting on the ground, that are not in bins. There was no notice that said that they won't be taking recycling that's bagged. Oftentimes, people will bag their recycling because they only have one bin, and recycling day is one day every two weeks. Thus accumulates a lot of recycling that cannot even fit in the bins or the bin that they have. Therefore, it has to be on the ground in a bag or exposed large pieces of cardboard. So if, if the county wanted to change things, they should have notified us. But on that note, I'm definitely going to be reaching out, because recycling day should be more often than one day every two weeks. It should be more often than two days a month. When you're recycling correctly and responsibly, you have to realize that the trash that you're accumulating comes out of those recyclable materials in the first place. So you're accumulating almost just as much recycling as you are regular trash. And therefore, I think they should be collecting recycling on a more consistent, often basis. So I definitely will be advocating for that, and I'll include, include my colleagues on this correspondence, and I hope to have their support as well, um, because this is an environmental issue. When you have loads of trash that are still left on the curb, and then they get blown around. We had nasty winds the last couple of days, so it's, it's all over the place on my street at least. Um, so I think that's a bad issue, and it's also a health hazard, too. When you're trying to be responsible and this recycling is accumulating on your property or in your house, because you have to wait every two weeks, it, it creates chaos within your house. It creates health hazards. It creates storage in, in, hell, it was a housing for frigging rodents and all kinds of stuff. So we need to get ahead of this, and I will be reaching out to the county, and, uh, hopefully, we can make some changes. And that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Harrison.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, I wanted to let everybody know, uh, 24-015 was tabled. Um, I reached out to the administration again about setting up, uh, Zoom meeting. We're looking for a date and a time with the Health Department, uh, trying to find out what the standards are going to be recommended from the Health Department. Also, looking forward in writing what the Health Department, uh, recommendation is regarding that. Um, if you, uh, I came across a couple interesting articles also, that, um, if you're interested, go on my Facebook page. You'll see them there in regards to this. Um, we spoke about the Rosado family. They've been here 10 years. Been doing a wonderful job, uh, Coffee and a Cop. They're a wonderful family, and they, uh, do all that they can to promote, uh, Trenton's finest. Um, it was brought up tonight about inspection staff. We need inspections. We, we need staffing, I think, almost in every department in this building. So I'm glad to see, you know, the DCA is going to hopefully work with us, my colleagues. We want to see, um, staffing, because staffing is a major part of this city. We have, like you said, there's people who want to help move the city forward, but we don't have the staffing to help move the city forward. Uh, also, um, would like to thank, uh, Trenton's, uh, Police and, um, the mayor, Maria Richardson. Last night on Kent Division, I happened to be going down the street and seeing a tree fell on a car. Um, made the cause, and everybody came out and, uh, helped clean up the tree that was blocking the street. So thanks, Trenton Police. Thank the mayor. Thank Maria Richardson. Um, also, uh, this weekend, let me get it on the phone here. Just had it, uh, it's the Punk Rock Festival at the, uh, arena. It's from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Uh, there's going to be over 100 vendors, making of art from across the country, dozens of food trucks, live DJs, celebrity guests, uh, sideshows, performers, uh, live tattooing. So it's another wonderful event. It's going to be at the Cure Arena, the, the Saturday and Sunday, between, uh, 10:00 AM and 5:00 PM. And that's it. Uh, I want to thank you, everybody, and have a blessed weekend.
Thank you. Council Vice President.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everybody. Um, so I just kind of, I don't like to repeat what my colleagues have said, but I'll just touch on a few things. Um, starting off, thank you, Councilwoman Gonzalez, again, for bringing that to our attention. Um, as someone who was kind of the, the subjective part of that article that recently went out, um, it is good to know that we have each other's backs, and we understand that, yeah, we do have other things going on. We cannot be at every event, um, all the time. You know, we have personal lives, we have things going on at home and our jobs, um, and we do try to support one another as best we can. Um, we don't need the press or anybody else, um, causing divisiveness within us, because, you know, this job in itself is hard enough. And we are all, you know, focusing on different parts of the city and the city as a whole, and really just doing our best to move the city forward. So we would just appreciate, um, you know, questions being asked and, you know, uh, getting facts before printing, um, you know, satirical type of, um, information. Um, I wanted to also, to Mr. Leonizio, thank you again. You know, I've known you since 2018, and you've always been very, very diligent in your dealings with the city and trying to move the city forward. I mean, from the moment I met you, you're always running around with a rolled up blueprint of some sort or some plan or whatever. So, you know, really appreciate the work you're doing and bringing it to our attention, something, again, that we are very much aware of. And, and, you know, it's very unfortunate, the position that we're in. And I remember asking questions earlier on when I first became a councilman, like, can we borrow inspectors? Can we do this, you know, from other municipalities? And it's not as easy as that, because there is a deficit in other municipalities surrounding us as well, but we also need to deal with home and get these positions filled and have people with jobs and, you know, move the city forward in that way. Um, you know, I myself am building a deck on my house, and I'm at the mercy of the city, because to get inspectors out for every step of the way, I have to wait, you know, before I can move on with the project, and it's just frustrating. And there's way, that's a small project, and there's way bigger things going on in the city, and we really, we have developers coming, you know, before us and wanting to build and wanting to bring people in, and, you know, it's kind of like stalemate sometimes, so it is frustrating. So thank you. I am looking forward to, um, meeting with and speaking with our new HCD director and seeing, you know, where we're going and how we're moving forward for the city. But thank you again for bringing that to our attention and, you know, for helping the residents and just doing what you do. You know, thank you for everything you're doing for, um, Mr.- You know, thank you for everything you're doing for Mr. Jose Noelia, you know, so great. Keep doing what you're doing, and we're here to listen. I want to applaud the sanitation department for the city of Trenton. Friday was a holiday. And as much as, you know, the residents should be aware that if your trash pickup falls on a holiday, you know, the city's closed, we're not picking up trash, and a lot of people just don't get the memo or they don't pay attention. And that's unfortunate. There was no trash pickup in some parts of Trenton, one being South Trenton. Obviously, I was dealing with that with my residents. And, you know, come Tuesday, our regular pickup, there was trucks that were broken down. So a lot of the trash was not picked up. I was sending emails out Tuesday night. I was tagged all over Facebook. I was phone calls, text messages. And I just want to applaud the city because whatever they were able to do on Tuesday, they did. And they came back out and they worked from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Wednesday, yesterday, to get the trash picked up. And then even 7:00 o'clock in the morning, when I was still texting certain folks with the city, I want to give a big shout out to Hector Way and to Tyrone G. They're on it. They were responsive and they got everything picked up. Different alleyways that were missed, they went back out and got it all picked up. Not just in the south ward, but I know east ward as well. I'm not sure whoever else is on the Tuesday, Friday schedule. But so just kudos to the city of Trenton. And there was 15 callouts yesterday. So they worked tirelessly from early morning to late at night to get that picked up. So I just wanted to give them a round of applause for doing their due diligence. Councilwoman Edwards talked about the recycling. Something else that I wanted to address about that is that there are certain alleyways in the city of Trenton, specific to, I'm speaking of south ward, obviously, where they have forward-facing houses in the alleyways. And those areas do not get the recycling trucks to go down those alleyways and pick up recycling. Those people have to actually take their recycling and move it to the closest corner, which is unfair. And that's something that I'd like to work on with these new transitions and these new rules that our Mercer County Recycling is imposing on the city of Trenton. Other than that, I just wanted to say that the event this Saturday, 1:30 to 3:00 o'clock, Let's Talk South Trenton with myself, Council President Feliciano and Councilwoman Edwards. So if you're not doing anything, please come up to One Up One Down. It's 7:50 Cass Street. And just, you know, give us your input. Or you know anybody in the south ward just wants to come out and see what we've been doing? You know, how we're trying to move the city forward, the ward forward. I like to call South Trenton the Forgotten Ward, and I've been working my butt off to change that.
Before I speak, I'd just like to take a moment. If Colin Cherry could approach and please, he has some information about inspectors that he'd like us to hear. So I'd like to grant him an opportunity to go ahead and say that without taking from my time. And he has a few minutes to go ahead and do that. Go ahead, Mr. Cherry. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll do my best to be quick. I'm getting timed as well, so.
Clock's ticking, Mr. Cherry.
So we have a couple of, we've had a couple of challenges. As you may or may not know, our DCA monitor has changed. And in that transition, we haven't really had any personnel waivers approved since early March. And among those include some of the electrical subcode officials that have been proposed by the city and hopefully will address some of those problems.
One second.
Of course.
Thank you. When did the monitor change?
Our new monitor officially started, I believe, this week? This week? Yes, this week. So.
To my knowledge, council was not notified of that. Maybe there were a couple here that knew, but I certainly had no clue that that had even happened. I'm not sure if any of my colleagues knew that that had happened.
Well, we have a. I was certainly made aware this week as well. We've just had a transition period. But we passed the new waivers, we passed the submitted waivers to our new monitor, who will be working on processing those. So I hope that will bring some staff. We're working with the new director to hire some additional staff as well. I had multiple meetings with her this week on personnel-related issues. And we're also working on some out-of-the-box ideas, like some shared service agreements with the surrounding municipalities that may allow us to have additional backup staff for inspections that we could share with those other municipalities, which would allow us to use them when we are in our biggest need. And I made it under the two minutes, so.
Can you tell us who the new person is, the new monitor?
The new monitor's name is Robert Simino.
Thank you. And how many inspectors?
We have an electrical subcode official that we're looking to hire right now, bring on board. We are also looking to post for potentially one or two additional positions. And we are looking to solve the vacancy in the construction code official, or rather, construction official as well.
Thank you. Any other council people have any questions for Mr. Cherry about inspections? I'll allow it at this time, very quickly. Yes, Councilwoman Edwards.
Just for clarity, that last comment you made was you said you were looking to post for one or two electricians?
No, inspectors in general. We're still working with the new director to determine what the needs of the office will be. And we're hoping that, once we have a construction official on board, that individual will also be able to provide some input and backfill some of those job responsibilities as well.
Anybody else?
Council President, will you also be posting to try to fill the position left by Mr. Bukie's retirement?
Yes. So the zoning situation, we had a part-timer who was helping us do some of the zoning situations or handle some of the zoning issues. That individual has decided to move on. So we are looking to fill that position permanently. It is in the pipeline. I had that conversation with the new director Tuesday, I think.
So that would be a full-time person permanently?
That's correct. This part-timer was just there in the interim to begin with. And we're now recognizing that now we have to, we'll probably try to come up with another stopgap solution while we process the hiring, but hiring for that position is important, yes.
Would there be any possibility of hiring an additional part-timer in addition to this full-timer? Because they were undermanned previously, even with Ray.
That is certainly a conversation that could be had, yes.
Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Cherry, just a quick question. How many inspectors, in your opinion, do we need for this city in order to be comfortable in, you know, being able to have these sites be looked at and, you know, projects be to move on, you know, as they need to move forward?
Madam Vice President, I don't feel comfortable giving you an answer to that question, but I can have a conversation with the director and make sure that information is provided to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Harrison.
Yeah, what is the breakdown right now of the inspectors that we have?
I honestly can't tell you off the top of my head. I know that we are seeking, we have paperwork to DCA to fill the electrical subcode official. And we will be bringing to council an ordinance to change the salary range for the construction official so that we can fill that position as well. But I just don't know off the top of my head what the other vacancies we have may be. But I can get that information to you.
Thank you, Mr. Cherry. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here and joining us tonight. I'll make my comments brief. Come out Saturday to the gala. You heard it. Passers Theater, they're going to be celebrating and having a good time with that. Tomorrow, as was stated, we're going to do the Coffee with the Cop at the Slamming Brew. Come out, but it's not with the cop. It's with the Trenton Fire Department and the emergency management system. So come out for that on Saturday, One Up One Down. We're going to be over there talking about South Trenton. As you hear the council people saying their various announcements and having their community meetings and things like that, I encourage everyone that can to come out and participate and take part. Take time to have the conversation directly with the council person. Again, as we go back to the whole social media, the media thing, and how things get twisted, the way that you find out the truth is by talking to us directly. I'd also like to say this. Sometimes we get emails, an overabundance of emails from certain people looking for answers to certain things. And some things we can answer and some things we cannot answer. But the one thing that I would ask the public to please be mindful of is just that you would like us to be respectful as we respond to you when we speak to you. Please be respectful of us when you come to us. As per the Open Public Meetings Act, we cannot collectively respond to an email that has more than four of us on an email. It is not appropriate to send, or I'm gonna say maybe not appropriate, I'm gonna say it's not respectful, for us to receive emails addressing all of us when people know that that is the fact, but then to dictate who is to answer the email back. For example, "Good evening, council. I have a problem with my dog that's running loose on the island." "Councilwoman Feliciano, you may respond." That is offensive. That is disrespectful, and that is ignored. Anyone is welcome to come to city council and address us right here for public comment. We are open to everything. We are open to every email, to every question, to every problem. The council is here to legislate. There are certain obligations that the administration must adhere to. And so for certain inquiries, you would address them to the administration. More times than not, we have no problem stepping in on emergent matters or even matters that people have been ignored on over a period of time if you want us to step in and assist with that. But again, there is respect in how we discuss these matters and how we are addressed and how we address people in return. So I would just like us to all be mindful of that as we move forward in moving Trenton in the right direction. To Leo's point, Leo, thank you for coming and talking about the inspectors. We know what it is. They know what it is. They need to fix it. The administration needs to fix it. They need to fix it. I think that when it comes to certain positions and everything, and I've said this in the past, what is the return on investment? And maybe that's the piece that's missing when we're addressing DCA and the like. If we talk about the inspectors, in my mind, and I don't know, it might be too far of a reach. But if we looked at the inspections department when they were fully staffed at whatever number that was and maybe did a trend analysis over a period of time, and we had a full staff and it was this many, this is the revenue that came in from this being happening, right? And this is where we are because we're not at full capacity. If we could show that number, then that justifies the need for the position. And maybe that's what needs to happen. I'm not sure if it is or if it isn't. But when it comes to various positions, if DCA has taken the stance that it is, you have to show us why you need, what you need, and the benefit of it, then let us get ahead of it and show it. Let's get out and show it. We have people here that are qualified to do it. And if we don't have the people here that are qualified to do it, then we need to get some that are. We are at a point that the city needs help. We need help financially. Personally, I feel like we would be in a good space if the state would pay us the full value, the tax value of the premises that they sit on that they don't pay the full tax value for. I feel as though they should pay their fair share to us. We are the capital city. They benefit from our services. They benefit from our people and the work, and we should benefit from them as well. Additionally, get off the waterfront. We could do so much if we had that space for us to be able to do it. But that is a call for the administration to make prayerfully. We'll work together with the council that one day we'll move in alignment and the state will understand that we need help and will give us what it is that we need to function at maximum capacity.
Certainly. Madam President, we can move on with the rest of the docket this evening?
Yes.
Council President. I'd like to request that 24-126 be moved from consent agenda. I know this is late in the game, but I've received some information, some concerns from constituents of mine late this afternoon regarding that this is a property sale and the ultimate use of this property in the East Trenton neighborhood. And I have some number of concerns from my constituents, as I mentioned, regarding their ultimate use. And I'd like to be able to have a chance to discuss that. And even if so, ask the city if they would consider pulling it from the agenda until next week so we can research some of the issues with these properties. I have also communicated with Mr. Michio. Properly, I had said that.
Yeah, she can pull that from the agenda. It can be discussed separately from the consent agenda, yes.
Okay.
So we're going to pull that from the consent agenda, put it to roll call then?
Yes.
Or are we pulling this for the purpose of, I'm asking?
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to have it moved to roll call, but also ultimately, I personally would like to have it be pulled from the agenda so we can find out more research on the sale.
So just to be clear, are you appealing to the city itself to pull it, or are you?
I'm appealing to council president and my council to move it to roll call. And if ultimately, from what's after that step, to a step of.
Okay.
Moving it to.
That's what I want to do. Right here, Colin Cherry.
I'll clarify. So it'll be pulled from the consent agenda. It'll be discussed separate and apart from the consent agenda. And then a decision can be made whether it's pulled or whether it's voted on via roll call.
Fine. We've pulled it from the consent agenda. We'll be discussed at roll call.
Yes, thank you.
What's that?
So Mr., you're pulling it. You're going to pull it. Once we move to put it to roll call, then you're going to, then you're going to pull it?
Yeah, I can officially do it, but any council person can ask to have any measure removed from the consent agenda, but.
So is that a motion to pull that? Is that what I'm asking for here?
I don't think, we don't need a motion.
No motion needed. That's what I want to clear.
Yep.
Thank you very much. I apologize for any confusion.
So my only concern is this. Thank you for all of that. My only concern is this, and it's fine that we're going to move it to the roll call and pull for discussion. But because the appropriate directors are not here for the discussion, I would respectfully ask that when conclusions or decisions like this are made in conversations that we just have the conversation before we even come here so that we know what's happening rather than hearing it right now at this moment. So because the directors are not here, and Colin has been doing his very best as we've been hitting him off so far with some questions, we'll move it, we'll do the motion to move it from the consent agenda to roll call. And then we will table this until the next Tuesday meeting when the appropriate directors are here in place that can answer whatever questions there are. Because what I don't want is for a bunch of questions to come that he can't answer, then we have to do it again. So we'll just wait until Tuesday. Right. That's what I want to do. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Thank you, Council President. The information was not related to me until my leaving my home.
That's fine.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Barcy. What are we doing?
Okay, so it appears that we need a motion to pull. Okay, so it appears that we need a motion to pull, that is 126, correct? From the consent agenda, correct? All right, may I have a motion?
So moved, second.
Thank you, I'll call the roll. Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro-Kettenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Now, may I have a motion to table Resolution 126?
So moved, second.
But we're gonna table it until Tuesday, April 16th?
That's a motion?
That's the motion, to table this until
April 16th?
Yes.
Thank you. So that motion is, excuse me, that motion, I'm sorry, can we, can I have a motion again?
Second.
All right, that was moved by?
Williams.
Thank you, and second by?
Feliciano.
Thank you. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro-Kettenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Council President?
Yes.
I too had a question about the same one. In a past meeting, we were told like we can't do the designee of an alleyway and do the purchase in one resolution. This one is like designating the developer, and it's also a purchase agreement for properties on separate streets. Should this be two separate resolutions, or am I incorrect? I could be wrong.
If Mr. Cherry wants to handle it first, so I can answer, I can follow up with Mr. Cherry.
Madam President, if I may. The distinction here is when we talk about those alleys, the first ordinance vacates our rights to the alley, then we allow the public to have their comment on that. We have a 20-day stopple period. And then we designate, we transfer the property to a different property owner. This resolution seeks to designate these individuals as redevelopers of property in a redevelopment area. So it's a different process than the process we take with the alleyways.
So it can be combined with the designee and the purchase agreement as well?
Yes.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Guns, um, yes, Brandon?
No problem, I'm on the case. Madam President, if you wanted to ask for a motion to approve communications petitions and reports?
May I have a motion to approve communications petitions and reports?
So moved, second.
Thank you. Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro-Kettenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving on to ordinances for second reading and public hearing. Ordinance 24-13, bond ordinance providing for Phase 4 of lead service line replacement program in Trenton Waterworks Service Area by the City of Trenton and the County of Mercer, State of New Jersey, appropriating $10 million, therefore en authorizing the issuance of $10 million bonds for, or notes to finance the cost thereof. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Certainly. Please state your name and address for the record. You will have five minutes to speak, and the council is not obligated to respond. Understood?
Good evening, Council. You guys are awesome, I'm so proud of you. Good evening, Councilwoman and Councilman Harrison. My name is Sherrell Snyder. I am a resident at 410 North Holden Avenue, Trenton, New Jersey. I am also a community organizer and advocate around lead toxins. So I am so happy this is coming up tonight, and I just wanted to speak to having these lead service lines removed. Besides, our Trenton residents have to worry about contaminations of lead from lead service lines coming into our house. And then, you know, our children or mothers go to the faucet to get the water that's coming from these lead service lines. And because of these lead service lines, it's leaching particles into that water that our residents are drinking. So we have to be diligent about getting these lines replaced. They've been in the ground for too long, they're very old, over 100 years old. And we all know, these lines are made of metal, and as metal gets old and starts corroding, it leaches. And mothers that can't afford going to buy bottled water all the time, they're going to the faucet, and they're filling this water into their baby's bottles for their formula. So that's direct ingestion of this toxin to our children. So we have to do everything possible to find the funding, get the funding, to get the lead service lines out of all of our Trenton. But I must have to tell you that we do have populations here in Trenton where poverty is real. So we have poverty, we have poor housing, poor water infrastructure, and racism, and our children are facing all of this. So our communities that need the most help, that's where I think the most money needs to go to. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
May I have a motion to approve? So moved, second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro-Kettenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 24-20, ordinance supplementing and amending Chapter 309, Water and Sewer of the Code of the City of Trenton, by adding Article 9, mandatory replacement of lead lines, of, excuse me, mandatory replacement of lead service lines in conformance with the New Jersey State law. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro-Kettenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 24-21, ordinance amending Ordinance 2018, entitled An Ordinance Continuing Certain Positions, Fixing Salary Ranges, Therefore, En Setting Forth Certain Regulations For The Implementation Of These Ranges For Ask Me Local 2286 Senior Radio Dispatcher. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
May I have a motion to approve? So moved, second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro-Kettenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 24-22, an ordinance of the City of Trenton and County of Mercer, New Jersey, amending ordinances to rescind, excuse me, to rescind special assessment in connection with Lead Service Line Replacement Project. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro-Kettenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 24-23, an ordinance authorizing, excuse me, an ordinance authorizing the honorary street naming of New Rose Street to Bishop Joseph and Mary Ravenel Way.
Madam President?
Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time?
Wait a minute.
Hit the button.
My name is Van Brown, I live at 27 Southeast Field Avenue, Trenton, New Jersey. And I wanna say, with respect to the ordinance, I'm glad to see a bishop or someone representing the church being honored in this blessed city, New York, uh, excuse me. Trenton is a blessed city. And I'm exhilarated tonight from hearing from you all that I have heard from, of all the energy of everybody coming together for the greater good of the city and for our lives here. And it's just, I'm just so excited. There's things that has to be done, that have to get done, and resources and all that. But here's the good news, it's gonna get done. I am very confident, and I wanna encourage you all, that it is going to get done. Cause this is the capital city of New Jersey. New Jersey, Trenton houses, the capital city of the entire state. We gonna get what we need, because it represents New Jersey. This is the thing, this is where the state meetings are held, this where the dignitaries come. To Trenton! So we're going to have everything we need, I just wanna encourage you. I've been praying and just believing this, and seeing all kinds of exciting things. And the beautiful thing is, I'm seeing the manifestation of it play out with the homes that are being, these longstanding properties that are dilapidated beyond repair, they have to be taken down. That's happening, sat for 30 years, and more. So we're doing it, it's just, we're collectively have, you know, we're gonna have to do it collectively like we're doing it, doing, and it'll get done, it's gonna, it has to get done. In fact, I'll put it this way, it's already done, already. We're just waiting for the manifestation of it. So be encouraged. Yeah, and thank you, God bless you all, thank you so much for your service and your diligence, and the stuff you do beyond what your council duties require you, in mind at times. And God bless you guys, thank you so much.
Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
Wait a minute, Councilwoman Edwards had a question, I think.
I believe at the beginning of the meeting, we said that this was supposed to be moved to first reading from the second reading because of the correction in the name, has that changed since?
No, they're gonna leave it.
It's still on second reading.
It's still second reading, Mr. K?
So it should be moved to first reading?
I'm sorry. This originally started out, it wasn't done correctly. It was submitted by one of the, I believe, department heads or division heads. It was done as a resolution, not as an ordinance. It wasn't worded correctly, so we picked up on it today, this afternoon, and we redid it. So now it conforms with the ordinance on the temporary honorary names of streets, et cetera. So it's fine to introduce tonight.
Is it fine to stay on that second reading?
I understand what you're, I understand what she's saying. We are at second readings and public hearings. So what she is saying is that this should be as
Wait, we introduced, did we, hold it. It can't be a second reading, because we didn't
Right, it needs to be introduced as an ordinance. So it wasn't introduced as an ordinance before it was introduced, was it?
It was passed as, was it passed as a resolution, or nothing was done yet before?
I believe this had to be turned into an ordinance, go ahead, Scott.
We have to introduce it tonight, then. From my recollection, this issue was taken care of before the last meeting, and it was introduced last meeting. But I guess I would ask for you to confirm that, but that's my recollection. And it would be on second reading tonight.
What I originally thought was that this was, hold on a second. What I originally thought, I thought this was, was this covered as an ordinance prior? And then it was the mis-titled?
It was never an ordinance before tonight, it came in as a resolution.
So that's what it is, then, because it came in as a resolution prior, it's supposed to be a resolution, it's supposed to be an ordinance. And the Councilwoman is correct, this should be listed for first reading. Thank you, Councilwoman.
It is first reading, you're right. Thank you, Councilwoman, we don't have enough lawyers here to pick up on it. Glad you did it.
I'm glad I took business law.
Thank you.
The clerk will take that one on the chin, too. Hold on one second. So with that being said, Madam President, we will move this to first reading. I'm sorry, huh?
So I can provide a lot of clarity, if you guys let me jump in. So the first, no? So, okay, I don't know, okay.
We're gonna introduce it tonight.
Yes, we will introduce this today. Thank you again, Councilwoman, I appreciate it. And we'll move on, Madam President, moving on with the consent agenda consistent.
Does this have to go? Does this have to go back to first read, like, what are we doing with this? Are we just
We will simply, I'll simply read this resolution and introduce it for first by title this evening.
For first reading?
Correct.
Right, okay, thank you, thank you.
Madam President, we've reached a point of consent agenda. Consent agenda now consists of Resolutions 24-8118, 120, 121, 122, 123, 124, 125, 127, 128, 129, 130, 131, 132, 133, 134, 135.
Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items so named by Mr. Garcia?
So moved, second.
Thank you. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro-Kettenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving on to roll call resolutions. Resolution 24-119, resolution authorizing settlement of a civil action in the matter of Westner D. Morenci versus City of Trenton in a total amount of $75,000.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro-Kettenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving on to Resolution 20, I'm sorry?
Ordinance, first reading.
Other ordinance is first reading after that, thank you. Resolution 24-126. Resolution amending Resolution 24-23, designating Trenton Development 1176, excuse me, 11756 LLC as redeveloper of various properties, 44 Brewing Avenue, 317, 319, 321, 323 St. Joe's Avenue, and 14 General Green Avenue, and further designating Trenton Development 11756 LLC as redeveloper of 28 Hart Avenue, and to authorize the execution of a redevelopment and purchase agreement for those properties located within North Clinton Avenue and Hermitage Avenue redevelopment areas for the total purchase price of $63,000. Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve? Or no, I'm sorry, this is table now.
Right.
I apologize.
Right, I didn't know where we were going.
Okay.
That's already been tabled for
That's right, this is table now, I'm sorry. I didn't kill my last note, I apologize.
That's why I just was waiting quietly.
Hold on a second. I'm like, wait a minute, I apologize for that, in any event. So now we have an ordinance for first reading, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we have an ordinance for first reading. Ordinance 24-23, ordinance authorizing the honorary name of Joseph and Mary Ravenel Way to New Rose, excuse me, the honorary street naming of New Rose Street to Bishop Joseph and Mary Ravenel Way. This was recently corrected. And Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve that ordinance?
Motion to approve, so moved, second.
Thank you.